Good evening. Welcome to the July 24, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Simeon Timbuk from Beth Esda, Romanian Pentecostal Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. So if you would please stand for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Legions. Good evening Pastor.
Good evening. Let's pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come; your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the day our daily bread, and forgive us our debt as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil ones; deliver us the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. We thank you for this day, and we ask you to bless the city council meeting, the mayor, and the city council members. Bless the city of Troy. Bless our state, and also bless the United States of America with your protection, your guidance. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I congratulate you, Jesus, for the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
Here.
Councilmember McCown.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
I did receive correspondence that Councilman McCown would be out of the county this evening, so I will move that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman McCown at the regular city council meeting for July 24, 2017 due to being out of the county.
Support.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Mayor Protem Hoderek that we excuse the absence of Councilman McCown at the regular city council meeting of July 24, 2017 due to being out of the county. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
Yes.
Councilmember McCown. Sorry, Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have one this evening. C1 is an economic development report with an introduction by Glenn Laypin, our economic development specialist. Good evening Glenn.
Good evening Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to bring up the date on economic development activity here in the city. Second quarter 2017, office vacancy rates continue to decline. That compares to 17.7% about a year ago. We're at 15.7% now, so we're heading in the right direction in terms of that. Gross rents are inching up a little bit in terms of the offices, which is usually a sign in terms of when the vacancies start declining, you're going to start seeing stronger rents as well. On the industrial side, vacancies remain low and they're stable. It's about 3% right now in the second quarter. That compared to about 3 points, about the same thing last year. And a five-year average comparison is 4.9%. So again, industrial vacancy rates are very low and the rates are stable. Even though we've seen improvements in terms of the declining vacancy rates, in terms of the office supply, and on the industrial side, we have very low vacancy rates, we have seen a few departures recently in terms of companies that have announced that they will be leaving. United Shore being the big one, they have outgrown their 275,000 square foot facility and plan to move to 600,000 square feet on 60 acres in Pontiac. That will impact 2,100 employees. They have moved scheduled for next fall in 2018. Longtime company INCO over on Maple Road is a 54,000 square foot Troy facility. They'll be moving to 135,000 square foot facility in Auburn Hills again next summer in 2018. And Trevco is moving out, they just moved out I believe this week or so, into a larger facility in Madison Heights. One thing that's in common for each of these facilities and each of these companies, we reached out to them, they made business decisions, they grew too fast in terms of their needs, in terms of their building needs, and felt the need, the business plan need to go ahead and find larger facilities, and that is what they did. We offered many other suggestions in terms of rebuilding on site, adding additions and looking at other opportunities as well, but they made the business decision to go ahead and move. On the positive note, I don't believe these facilities will be vacant at all. United Shore is working with a potential tenant right now to take up most of that building, and Trevco has already received some firm offers for their site on Stevenson Highway. In terms of recent property sales, the market is still strong here in Troy. 901 Tower Drive recently sold for about $71 a square foot by Core Partners. They're going to be proposing some outlot developments out there as well. And also the Troy Office Center on East Big Beaver and Livernoy, they have a couple buildings over there. They're going to be, Hayman Group has purchased that property, they'll be putting about $10 million of improvements onto that site. And just recently, in the past couple of days, 900 Wilshire and 1050 Wilshire recently sold as well, about $33.5 million. That's an $89 per square foot rate, which is very strong, very strong. So we're seeing a lot of positive activity in terms of the sales. We are seeing growth in multiple sectors. In the healthcare area, Oakland Community Health has purchased the formerly vacant 5505 Corporate Drive for $10 million. They'll be moving 145 employees into that site along with many subcontractors as well. Automotive manufacturing continues to roll in terms of research and development. We're seeing development with Roush over in Ring Row, which is by John R. and 14 Mall Road. A 44,000 square foot facility, they'll be moving 150 employees into there. Nifco America, the Japanese company, moving into 800 Tower Drive in the same building. Guardian will be moving in some of their financial services operations from Auburn Hills. 50 employees will be going into there. And Quster is a German company. They employ 16 employees, but they're over at New King as well. So a lot of growth up in North Troy. On the financial services side, Mercantile Bank is the third largest bank headquartered in Michigan. They'll be opening up their only southeast Michigan location on Big Beaver. Their Grand Rapids-based bank. And BDO continues to expand. They're moving from PNC Tower to the Bank of America Building, 147 employees and beautiful office space, 22,000 square feet. IT and Communications, Clear Rate, is moving their world headquarters to Troy. They're bringing 60 employees with them over at 2600 West Big Beaver, that is the Bank of America Building. E7 Solutions has already moved in, moved their headquarters to 2800 Livernoy, and they're a software development company. Everybody's been hearing about Amazon lately, getting a lot of press as part of their strategy here in southeast Michigan. They are seeking warehouse space that are well-located, so they found one at 999 Chicago Road, 26,000 square foot warehouse. This is in addition to the other facilities they're building in Romulus and Shelby Township they just announced, and Livonia as well. So this will most likely be a fulfillment center to help reduce their delivery times. We work very closely with the state of Michigan and Oakland County on attraction projects. Two attraction projects that are recently approved are with existing companies here in Troy. Valio will be adding 145 jobs to their facility on Stevenson Highway, and Detroit Engineered Products will be adding 102 jobs up on Long Lake near Rochester Road. We have four attraction projects in the pipeline that we're currently working with. These are each foreign-owned companies that are seeking locations here in the city, so we're working with the state on trying to close these deals. We also have a very active Brownfield redevelopment authority. They've approved two projects just recently. We're going to talk about the Regency at Troy projects in just a few minutes for the public hearing. Somerset Plaza is where Whole Foods is at Coolidge and Maple Road. That has been sold to the Jonas, EF Jonah Company. B.R.A. Plan Number Eight calls for the demolition of the vacant office building that is on the Coolidge side of that facility, expansion of the shopping center, and the creation of two new outlets on that facility. There is a dry cleaning store operation that has been on that site since the late 1960s, so the Brownfield will be going to help clean that up. The state is always looking to try and attract businesses, as are the local communities, and the state has felt a strong need to be able to expand their toolbox in doing so. They're currently, they currently have a program right now that basically helps fill a gap for bringing in companies, but they feel that is not enough. And so, in order to try and attract significant jobs to Michigan and to be competitive with other states, the Good Jobs for Michigan incentive was recently approved by the House. This creates tax incentives for large job providers by allowing companies to keep up to 100% of state income taxes withheld from certified new employees for up to 10 years. The tax capture will vary depending upon the number of jobs created, all above 250, and depending upon the average wage. This will exclude retail development, stadiums, casinos. Very short sunset on this at the end of 2019, and it'll be only 15 agreements per year statewide. Michigan is one of only two states, the other one being Alaska, that has a corporate income tax but does not offer tax credits for new jobs. So they felt it was very important to try and be competitive with other states as they're trying to move major companies to Michigan. The second one is Transformational Brownfields. Many of you may have heard this. It's for the Dan Gilbert initiated proposal for some of his projects. This, unlike the Good Jobs for Michigan project, this is for mixed-use projects, can include retail. It is maximum of only five projects per year statewide, and that program will sunset at the end of 2022. This allows for the capture of construction period taxes, income taxes, and withholding taxes in addition to property tax incremental revenue from the Brownfield. The high threshold, $50 million for a city the size of Troy in terms of the capital investment for a project. It is yet to be seen whether either of these two incentive projects will impact the city of Troy. We'll wait to see, but it'll be working very closely with the state of Michigan and the county to see if there'll be any fits going forward in the future. We talked about projects and economic development. I wanted to make sure I mentioned another side of it. We do small business workshops. We do it in conjunction with Oakland County and the Troy Chamber of Commerce. These have been very successful. The one we had on July 11 attracted 50 people. For market research, basically, these are folks that are trying, they're working out of their house, they're trying to start a company. We have another one this Thursday. We already got 80 people, already RSVP'd for the, normally they get about 15 people when they do this up at the county. So Troy's proving to be a very strong location for these workshops. We want to keep encouraging potential entrepreneurs to come here to learn more about developing their business, and then offering them the resources and services to expand those businesses. So we think that's very positive for Troy and economic development in the city. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Glenn. Good news. Questions for Glenn from council? It's always easy when the news is good. Thanks Glenn.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no carryover items this evening, so, and we will move to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. E1 is a public hearing for the adoption of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Seven for Regency at Troy located at 2785 West Maple Road, south of Maple, east of Coolidge, Section 32. And I see Glenn Laypin is at the podium again to make an introduction. Good evening Glenn. Let me open this public hearing.
Good evening again. On April 18, 2017, the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority recommended approval of Brownfield Plan Number Seven. That is for the Regency at Troy. That is at 2785 West Maple Road. It is the former McGregor Manufacturing Facility, and that facility is proposed, has been purchased, and the site has been purchased by Sienna Healthcare, and they are proposing a $26 million project that would include assisted living and skilled nursing center, about 250 beds. The total contamination on the site in terms of eligible activities for Brownfield is about $260,000. And we have some members of the project team here today, Elizabeth Masterang and Corey Levin from PM Environmental, and they would like to provide, we'd like to have them provide an overview, quick overview of the project.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please use the microphone, please.
Thank you. Thanks. Good evening. My name is Corey Levin. This is Elizabeth Masterang. We're both of PM Environmental. We are here on behalf of Sienna Healthcare Management to discuss Brownfield Plan Number Seven and the Brownfield request for the Regency at Troy Development located at 2785 West Maple Road. We'll keep this pretty brief given the introduction from Glenn. Sienna Healthcare is seeking reimbursement through tax increment financing for various Brownfield eligible activities that the state has deemed hindrances to redevelopment under the Brownfield, Michigan Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act. Under the Michigan Brownfield Act, Brownfield plans can be created to stimulate the redevelopment of properties with impediments to potential redevelopment such as contamination, functional obsolescence, and blight. In this circumstance, 2785 West Maple has been deemed by the city assessor to be functionally obsolete, so it is Brownfield eligible. Under Brownfield Plan Number Seven, Sienna will incur all Brownfield costs upfront to be reimbursed over what we project to be about a two-year time period. A quick background on Sienna Healthcare, they are privately owned company based in Southfield, Michigan, founded in 1998. They are the largest privately owned operator of skilled nursing and rehabilitation centers in Michigan with approximately 4,000 licensed beds and I believe 36 nursing communities throughout the state. Sienna provides jobs across healthcare and service industries. And Sienna scouted various properties in the state for this investment and views this particular property as an ideal site for their project. And we just have a couple of brief slides to go through it very quickly. You can see the location just on the south side of Maple Road, east of the Maple and Coolidge Highway intersection. It's an 8.25 acre site. The property was developed in 1957 and is the former home of McGregor Manufacturing. The building in the photographs up there still remains there today. It was used for various manufacturing uses for about the first 50 years of its life. Throughout, from about 2007 to the last year, it transitioned more to a storage facility. It's been sitting vacant for about the past year. And once again, the city assessor has determined the property to be functionally obsolete due to a substantial loss in value based on the age and poor condition of the building. Our firm, PM, completed various environmental assessments at the property. We drilled in various areas to make sure that the property was safe for redevelopment, and we did not have any hits of contamination that would prove to be problematic. So this is purely a functionally obsolete property. And additionally, during those assessments, asbestos-containing materials were identified within the existing building, and those are, those abatement activities will be part of the Brownfield Plan. For just a quick project summary, it's the demolition of the existing building on the property for the new construction of both combined skilled nursing facility and assisted living facility. Sienna has actually increased their projected amount of investment in the property, and they're looking at about $35 to $40 million in private investment, approximately 224 square feet, and approximately 250 beds to be divided between skilled nursing and assisted living. Skilled nursing provides a higher level of medical care, which is provided by trained professionals, whereas assisted living is more long-term care for adults that can live independently but also require some assistance. So it will be a mix of the two with some area for common areas. And the, they are estimating about 200 to 250 jobs created on the property resulting from the development, and those will be throughout a cross-section of industries, including medical professionals and service industries. The benefits from job creation and patient influx into the area are pretty great compared to the costs associated with the Brownfield Plan. Additionally, Sienna will be incurring that risk upfront by incurring those costs. And the Maple-Coolidge corridor and intersection in particular will, will create a amount of spin-off retail based on, based on the project, just influx of people into the area. As Glenn said, the Brownfield Plan request is $260,005. That would be the cap barring any amendment to the plan. That includes a 15% contingency for any unexpected costs during the construction period. And then those eligible activities are a cross-section of baseline environmental assessments, demolition, and then asbestos abatement as I stated earlier. The basis for the Brownfield Plan is the current taxable value of the property, which is about $880,000. The city assessor's projection is that the taxable value of the development, the property post-development is $9.8 million. Given that increment, it's a pretty quick capture of about two years, which will be local only, so no school, state taxes will be captured. They will only be seeking recapture from local taxing sources. And then during the plan, while capturing local taxes, there will be about over $500,000 worth of taxes preserved for those state taxing units. And immediately after, after the developers fully reimburse, development will result in a greatly increased tax base with significant job creation. And then finally, we just have some site plans and renderings that have previously been approved by the city planning commission. There have been multiple iterations of these plans that have gone before the commission for comment before arriving at the designs that are, have been agreed and approved upon. All of the planned commission comments were addressed throughout that process. So as you can see, there's the site plan for the property, and then just a few renderings of what it might look like.
Any questions from council for the presenters this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up to speak on this item this evening, but if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, please identify yourself. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move E1, Adoption of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Seven for Regency at Troy located at 2785 West Maple Road, south of Maple, east of Coolidge, Section 32. As per it.
Support. Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilman Baker that we approve E1, which is the adoption of the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Seven for Regency of Troy located at 2785 West Maple, south of Maple, east of Coolidge, Section 32. Any further discussion? Councilman Baker.
I just want to say, I think it's great to see, we just talked about two Brownfield projects coming to that, the West Maple. We talk a lot about the Big Beaver Corridor and Rochester and everything, but it's nice, these two projects are very close to each other with Somerset and the Sienna Healthcare, so it's nice to see a lot of activity coming into that area, the facelift that it needs. I think it's a good step forward for the city, and I'm happy to see that.
The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations. Welcome to Troy. Next on the agenda is E2, another public hearing for proposed amendments to TDDA, Development of Tax Increment Financing Plan, and amendments to Ordinance 80. I see Mark Miller, our Director of Economic and Community Development, at the podium. I will open the public hearing. Mark, good evening.
Thank you Mayor. Good evening, members of council and mayor. What we're considering tonight in this public hearing are the 2017 amendments to the Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan of the City of Troy Downtown Development Authority. Just so that going forward, I'm just going to say "the plan" is just as common, just to make it easier. Right now, we see the image of the Downtown Development Authority boundaries. The red properties that are highlighted have been removed from the plan in 2013, and then that gave the DDA the positive tax capture. Oops, wrong way. So I'm going to quickly go through what the DDA is enabled to do through state law. They're basically to encourage revitalization of the downtown district, do long-range planning, construct and improve buildings, acquire and improve land, improve public facilities, tax increment financing, revenue bonds, public facility improvements. It's, DDAs are a very unique and flexible tool, and they actually have a wide range of powers. So we are then required to create a plan, which is recommended by the DDA to city council, and in that plan, each community can set forth what ability and what, take these powers and apply what powers the DDA has, because once we get there, I'll show you that our DDA is limited at this time. So the DDA was created in 1993, and then the plan was amended in 1998, 2000, twice in 2002, and then 2007, and lastly in 2013. And that's when we removed those eight properties from the TIF plan to create positive capture. So the current plan limits the powers to one, that first and foremost, the tax increment financing capture has to be dedicated to service the city bonds, first and foremost. And once that happens, we have the ability to apply funds of maintenance of Big Beaver Road, the median, the curbside, the sidewalks, and then pay administrative costs to the city for our staff time. The current plan is working well. The DDA revenues fund the city's bond payments, and we have enough DDA revenues for maintenance and the administrative costs. So where are we going? Right now, as you see, as you drive them down, we have lots of development and redevelopment pressure on Big Beaver. We, as a city, desire mixed use and intensity, which requires parking structures. However, the city and the DDA is looking for high quality, and developers are looking to us to provide incentives, especially for those parking decks, because approximately, one space in a parking deck costs approximately $25,000. So we thought internally to try to create a program that has no risk for the city, and that's what the QDI does. And it also utilizes private financing, because a lot of DDAs do financing, they float bonds. We didn't want to do that. We want to target privately owned public, excuse me, privately owned parking structures which are open to the public, because that's what makes mixed use pop. And then encourage mixed use in quality and intensity as part of this. I will note though, that the plan is written as such that it can be used for any publicly owned private facility. And the other one I see maybe happening is stormwater detention, because as you build up properties and make them more intense, you have to put the stormwater underground. Here's the chart, which I believe you've all seen before, which demonstrates what happens with the proposed QDI program. In 1993, the DDA was formulated, and what we have is whatever the property's taxable value is where in 1993 is the base. And then as the values go up, and we also saw when they go down, the opposite happens, that's the capture, or negative capture, and we took those eight properties out that were negative capture. And so we're moving along at this right now. But what the QDI proposes is that if we have new investment and we agree to help fund these publicly owned private facilities, we have the ability through the DDA to apply up to 60% of that new investment, the new capture, to help assist in yearly payments to the developers. Now they'll never, the DDA sunsets in 2033, so it can't go beyond that date. So in effect, there's no risk to the DDA because if there's no capture, they can't provide any payments. Now, and it's on a case-by-case basis. Like I said, it's up to 60%, and then the 40% goes to the DDA. Before we move on, I just want to know if there's any questions about the slide.
Councilman Henderson.
The easy question, the DDA, the dark blue DDA capture, so the 40% would just be added to that essentially.
Yes, exactly. Okay, let me move on. So the amendments which are included in what I call the 2017 amendments of the plan includes the ability to fund marketing expenditures once the bond payments are paid in the yearly budget. We have not set aside any amounts. We'll have to look at that on a yearly basis with Tom to see how much we could really put forward. Honestly, it's not going to be a lot of money. It really isn't. If I had to just guess, you know, maybe 15,000 to 20,000 maybe. But it also adopts the Quality Development Initiative, which I'll call the QDI for now. And basically, the QDI may utilize 60% of the annual tax increment increase of the target property, because this is on an individual property basis, one-on-one, that, and then to be used for public facilities and enhancement. So we had a few meetings with the DDA, and the DDA, when we first went to them, when we developed the program, we really did not have any standards for approval, and so they asked us to do that, and we went and developed these standards. And I will note, number six and seven are the real teeth, and I'll go through them. First, the project, some of these are the real easy given ones. It has to have a public use, public benefit, privately owned public facility. It has to be consistent with the city's master plan, consistent with the vision set forth in the Big Beaver Corridor study. Big Beaver Corridor study, it shall contain mixed use. And then number six is important, the assistant payments shall not be greater than 60% of the cost to construct the privately owned public facility. So let's just say if we're assisting a developer with a parking deck, in no case can we pay, the DDA pay, more than 60% of the construction cost. And we're talking construction costs, not all the other soft costs related to it. And then the next limiting factor is that, that the new TIF created from the new investment, the QDI cannot provide more than 60% of that new tax capture for, from the new investment. So up to 60% of the new tax capture could be used. In talking a little bit internally about this, I think the more limiting factor is going to be the 60% of construction, though, when it comes down to it. So also, what's important to know is that we have a requirement that shall, these projects shall contain some form of a parking structure, whether it's a deck or underground, and a minimum of the 50% of the parking has to be in those structures. And then, this, and then, on the other hand, we've had some parking decks historically built in our community which are not of high quality, we require high quality in those decks. And then obviously go through our permit process, and then if it's a storm, I won't go through this, if it's a stormwater project, they have to follow best managed practices as set forth and reviewed by our city engineer. So this evening, you have a resolution in front of you adopting the 2017 amendments, and also an amendment of Chapter 80, excuse me, Ordinance 80, which just, all we do is add the new plan and the date that it was approved. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from council? Mayor Protem Hoderek.
It leaped out, Eddie. What defines a high-quality parking deck? I mean, are there standards that we have developed in our plan, or how do we determine that?
We don't have exact standards, but I believe we have enough staff in the Planning Commission to help determine that. We know what's good and what's not good.
Okay.
And in this, and if, and if in the process, they're moving in a direction that we don't like, and is going through the Planning Commission, we're not going to utilize a QDI on the project. As an example, A-8, West Big Beaver has, I think, the ugliest parking deck in the city. Well, we would never, ever consider a parking deck that was there, and luckily, that's going to be torn down in the redevelopment of that site.
Mark, we, we've had a study session on this, we've, obviously, the DDA has met and approved this, this also.
Yes, and you also had a joint meeting with the DDA?
What sold me on this was, this capture wouldn't even happen unless they did the project. So, you know, we're getting, we're getting this only if they do a project like they're going to do next door at A-8, excuse me. And there is, this does run out, and once it runs out, we get the entire capture back.
Correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Dan McLeish, Troy resident, has signed up to speak on this item. If you come forward, Mr. McLeish. For those that are going to speak this evening, please keep in mind that you have three minutes. The green light will come on when the three minutes starts. The yellow light will indicate you have one minute left, and then start wrapping it up, if you could.
Hold me there.
And when that red one comes, we're going to, we're going to close it down. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, thank you for your time. I just want to caution the council to be careful about what they are getting into. I've been on the DDA since its inception. We brought in the Somerset collection, but it was a different type of situation. We did the public, the Big Beaver Road, it was two lanes when we started, the Big Beaver, or the Downtown Development Authority, and we helped fund when it went to two lanes, two lanes each way, and then three lanes each way, and as well as the other improvements along it. And that benefited the businesses directly to it, and that is what was really the intention of the DDA, is to benefit the businesses in the corridor, and as a resultant from that, it would benefit the citizens of the, of the city of Troy. I came to Troy in 1970, and I've been here ever since. I just want to, we, we had a hiccup back in 2002, when we, we had a new governor and a new legislature, and they changed the tax laws, and we went down dramatically in our, in our businesses all over the entire state of Michigan. We lost 2 million manufacturing jobs, we lost a million people from the state of Michigan, and as a builder, we went from 12,000 builders to 2,700 builders in the state of Michigan. We went from 50,000 homes annually, each and every year, to 1,000 in the last year of Mrs. Granholm's tenure. All I'm saying is, in 2002, because of that, we had funded, we had a problem with the, and I consider myself a citizen of Troy, when the community center was being enlarged and remodeled, they ran into trouble, and they ran out of money, and so we took the DDA money and funded it. And then when we had the downturn, we lost our tax base, and as a result, the citizens had to come back to the, the city council and, and pick up the slack. All I'm just saying is, I'm for growth, that's why I'm still in this business. I've been in it for 50 years, and I love the city of Troy, and I would love to see everything go great going, but I think you really need to be very careful about the, the way we are spending money that we don't necessarily have right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Jill Thompson, Troy resident, has signed up to speak on this item? Jill Thompson in the... Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item this evening that hasn't signed up? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing, return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move E2, Proposed Amendments to TDDA Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Amendments to Ordinance 80 as printed.
Support. By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve E2, the Proposed Amendments to TDDA Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Amendments to Ordinance 80. Is there further discussion? Councilman Baker.
Mark, do you know, the DDA has approved this already, is that correct?
Yes, they have, the minutes were in your agenda.
And it's unanimous, right?
Yes, but there were four members absent, I just checked.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hoderek.
Listening. What happens if we hit a downturn? With this, what are our risks if we hit a downturn?
City Manager Kishan?
Yeah. Mayor Protem Hoderek, that's, that's the point of this plan, there is no, as you stated, there is no risk to the city. If there's no increased value, there's no capture, there's no payment being made. So it's not like we're taking money out of the DDA coffers and giving it to developers for whatever, for a project. If they generate value and their taxes go up, they get a percentage, and the city gets a, the DDA gets a percentage. If not, no checks are cut. It's, it's only unless they make an increased investment, increased value, increased tax payment. Otherwise, zero.
That's how I understood it. I wanted to make sure I understood correctly. Thank you.
Any, any other questions? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks to everyone that, it was a long, hard topic for quite a while, but I think it's a good thing for the city. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I see that we have six residents that have signed up to speak. Please remember, you have three minutes, the green light will come on, and when the yellow light comes on, please start wrapping it up. When the red light comes on, we will stop the discussion. First is Don Michelson, Troy resident, wishes to speak on N1. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly for this evening. I would like to express my opposition to the proposed commercial development of the Civic Center property. Having sat in that second chair for six years back in the 70s, I know difficulties as citizens could be at times, but looking, looking at the, at the pluses and the minuses of what's being proposed, to me, it looks like economic idiocy. I mean, the outlay, the decision you have to put out, upwards of 60 million to prepare the land and remove and replace the amenities already in place that we put in, and the additional cost of handling traffic, fire control, police, police control, and all of these things just don't seem to make a whole lot of sense, especially after 20 years, we make it 12 million dollars back. So where, where's the equity? Where's the, where's the, where's the need? We don't need the residential, we've got it everywhere, else in the city are one, ABC, and D. We don't need the retail, we got South and North, Somerset Mall, we got strip malls on every four corners of the city, Oakland Mall, take a drive-through, look at the empty parking lots, then look to the west and see what's happened to Northland Center. City of South, still trying to figure out what to do with that land. Maybe houses would go there, I don't know. But I'm just saying, you have a difficult decision to make, I understand that, but vote with your heart and your head, and don't let those with, with dollar signs in their eyes steer you astray. Thanks for your time and your attention, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Michelson. Just to, I didn't stop Mr. Michelson, but N1 is a council referral to remove the Civic Center site from the DDA. It's not, it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with whether this site will be developed or not, so please stay on topic. N1 is a council referral to remove the Civic Center site from the DDA. Louise Ross, Troy resident, is asked to speak on N1.
Louis. Louis.
Oh, Louis, I'm sorry, Louis, I read it wrong. Louis Ross, good evening.
Am I allowed to speak on anything? Or does it just...
If it's on the agenda, you can speak in, at this particular time.
Okay.
Do you wish to speak on N1?
Is M1 that green space you want to develop?
It's, it's a council referral to remove the Civic Center site from the DDA.
Okay, and that's the only thing we're allowed to speak on right now?
You can speak about anything on the agenda, but that's what N1 is.
Okay.
We're not here to talk tonight about a Civic Center project on the agenda.
Okay, what I want to talk about, though, is that dog track, or whatever you call that dog thing, I read in the paper, well, you got land free. Somebody donated it to you?
Mr. Ross, start talking, and we'll see if you, if you, if you're okay or not, okay? You want to talk about the dog park?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I remember just recently reading a lot of it, you, you got land free about 10-plus years ago to build a depot, and what happened? Didn't turn out free, it turned out very expensive. I just, everything I read in the paper, that there didn't seem to be anyone in charge of anything. It was a fiasco. And that dog park, you're going to have liability insurance, you're going to have maintenance, and talking to my neighbors, I don't have a dog, I used to, I grew up with one. House north of me, house south of me, they border my property, they both have dogs, they wouldn't take them there because of what their vets said. Cross the street, one house north, cross the street, one house south, they wouldn't take their dogs there because of what their vets said. Behind me and one house south, same thing. Guy next door with, with three dogs, his brother lives quarter mile closer, he wouldn't take his dog there because of, because of what their vets say. Is, is that a good idea, just because somebody donates it to you? Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. James Savage, Troy resident, wishes to speak on N1. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the City Council. M1 refers to the Civic Center site being taken out of the DDA, and that is what I'm talking about. For over 20 years, I have attended most council meetings. Usually, these meetings are routine, rather dull, and poorly attended by the public. I recall a few occasions when this room has been filled to overflowing, filled with angry residents opposing the policies of the city council, and I'll name a few. The Delphi Tax Abatement, the Convention Center, the sports stadium, and more recently, the McClure Street Apartments. So many angry residents, but there was one exception. In 2004, the Task Force Plan was presented to the city council. At that time, this room was full, not with angry residents, but the people were here to support the plan. It seemed that the whole of Troy was united in this support. There was, this was what, my mind was what the people wanted, and this plan did not die of natural causes. So that's the question we found, I ask it again, what happened? Who was responsible for the demise of the Task Force Plan? Was it swept under the rug? If so, who was holding the broom? Did it fall through the cracks? If so, do those cracks still exist? Did the council at some time decide against it? If so, there should be some record? Or was personal persons responsible moving it forward, not doing their job? Or, and I put this as a question, was corruption involved? Was someone paid or influenced in any way to stop the Task Force Civic Center plan? Regarding the proposal of Councilmember Baker, I'm not sure where, where this will take us, but I feel it is a step in the direction, and I hope the council approves it. And I should add that my comments are mine alone, and I speak for myself, and hope that many of the citizens of Troy agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Marash, Troy resident, wishes to speak on N1. Arthur Marash. Aaron Green, Troy resident, wishes to speak on N1.
Based on her clarification, I'll hold my comments to the general law.
Thank you. Thank you. Jill Thompson, Troy resident, wishes, wishes to speak on N1. That concludes those that have signed up to speak on public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Next on the agenda, City Council, City Administration response, reply to public comment any this evening. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. First, I1, Board and Committee Appointments. There are no mayoral appointments or city council appointments this evening. I2, Board and Committee Nominations. I have one nomination that I'd like to present this evening. For the Downtown Development Authority, I would like to nominate Brian For the Downtown Development Authority, I would like to nominate Brian Miodus, I'm going to butcher this, Mioduski, M-I-O-D-U-S-Z-E-W-S-K-I. I would like to nominate him to the Downtown Development Authority for the term that expires That was a position that was held by David Haye, who represented Kelly Services, and Brian also works for Kelly Services, so I thought it was appropriate to replace someone within Kelly Services. So I will move that nomination.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate Brian Mioduski to the Downtown Development Authority for the term that expires 9/30/2019. Any discussion this evening? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you to Brian for volunteering for that position. My understanding, there will be no city council nominations this evening. There is no request for a closed session this evening, which is I3, so we will move to consent agenda. Anyone wish to remove a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown? Sorry, Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. K1 is an announcement for a public hearing. K1A for August the 7th, 2017. There will be a public hearing for the planned unit development application file number PUD JPLN 2016-0029-Proposed Troy Crossing, which is on the north side of Big Beaver, east of John R., parcel 88-20-24-352-024-025-026-027-028-041, Section 24, which is currently zoned PUD 8, which is a planned unit development 8 district. K2, memorandums. There are no memorandums submitted this evening, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I will call on Denise Polacella, Troy business owner that wishes to speak this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Denise Polacella. I have a lot from actually across the street, and Lori and I are acquainted. I have great respect for her, so some of what I brought, I'm sure you already know because she is as much up on marijuana law as I am. For brevity purposes, I'm a marijuana attorney. I had a hand in the current law, meaning the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, and I'm simply here tonight to encourage council during its moratorium period to schedule a meeting, either during a work session or as an agenda item on the regular city council meeting schedule, to more fully discuss the potential economic development benefits of allowing manufacturing facilities. I'm not aware of anybody who is even remotely interested in doing a retail facility in Troy, but as I'm sure you're aware, you have eighty-four-ish different caregiver-approved grow facilities in Troy in thirty-odd buildings. I've been listening to the meeting. There's been a lot of talk of economic development in Troy. If you took even one-third, which would be, you know, about ten of the buildings that have been approved, all of which are completely unregulated by the state and will continue to be, if you take even ten of those and regulate them under the new Medical Marijuana Facilities Act, you'll have thirty, or three hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred fifty to three hundred high-skilled, high-paying jobs and a continued benefit from the commercial tax base of those facilities. So I think that particularly allowing what is already going on largely in the industrial district in Troy, simply to move to a regulated, state-licensed, excise-tax-producing and job-producing function, as opposed to maintaining an unregulated, untested, untaxed, you know, facilities that they are now, is certainly worth a look from the city, and that's what we're requesting, simply that we get it into a work session or on the agenda, and I have some handouts which I promise are brief and painless that you can read later.
Thank you. If you could give them to the city clerk, please?
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Green, I know you signed up probably at the wrong spot. Did you wish to speak at this spot this evening? Counsel, there's no problem, we'll speak here. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, counsel. I wanted to speak briefly around the redistricting, no redistricting, the rezoning and discussions around the Civic Center property, which is why we selected that, we were instructed to. Anyhow, to the point, I have been very troubled in recent days watching comments on Facebook as various people have gone to the public comments and the informative meetings, and just been out and about the city, and have encountered the petition that was discussed last time that's been floating around that talks about taking any property or piece of property over two acres that is owned by the city or dealt with by the city and making that part of a public referendum during the general election or a special election. And I'm looking at that and thinking, I have a nearly two-acre property, and it's tiny. The city owns tons of property overall or deals with lots of it, and having that covered by this proposed ballot measure, having that as part of our city charter could cripple the city's functionality. It could make it so that we can't do anything in this city without going to a general vote. It would slow the business of the city to a crawl. It would make it so that we could not develop economically. It would make it so that this city slowed and fell far behind everyone around us. This happened to us before, I don't want to see it again. I've moved to this city, I'd like to see it thrive. That is independent of the planned potential downtown redevelopment of the Civic Center area, and I will say that I am very much in support of the proposal. I like that proposal. Maybe there are modifications that need to be made, but it is by no means finalized, and I'm aware of that. But I would encourage anybody out there to look at that petition very carefully and realize that it does not deal solely with that particular situation, and that there are better ways to do that. Based on last meeting, you all seemed very open to listening to what people have to say about this, and there was discussion, maybe this is the wrong time. I don't think it is. I think that we are behind on that, as I mentioned last time, but I think it would be a terrible mistake to conflate the ballot measure that's floating around with the proposed development of the Civic Center property, and I desperately hope that the fellow residents of the city don't see this measure as a way forward because it will not be one. It will stop us in our tracks, and that they don't see this planned redevelopment as a way to crush the city, it's a way to move us forward. A strip mall is not a downtown. A strip restaurant is not an upscale dining area in a downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. That concludes those that have signed up to speak on public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. This is an opportunity for city council or city administration response. Any response from council?
Segue, you want?
Mr. Mayor? I signed up. Turn my way.
Maybe he wasn't.
Come forward, we'll let you speak, please. I know, Mr. Nary, you must have pushed the wrong button or something, maybe. Good evening.
Hi, how's everybody?
Use the microphone, Mr. Nary, please, give us your name and-
Okay, okay. Arthur Maros, forty-year resident.
Somebody else, you did sign up.
Yeah.
You must not have, yeah.
I might have been in the bathroom. I'm old. 3221 Helena Drive, Troy, Missouri, 48083. Back in 2014, they changed the Civic Center from, you know, being a park, being a public area, and I didn't see any notices about that, I didn't see any public hearings about that, I didn't see any public vote on that. Oh, yes, there was a vote. People voted two thousand for yes, nine thousand for no, and then shortly after, they picked up, that's talking about developing the green area, the park, the campus, the Civic Center, which has been changed to city center, which, how many city centers do we have? The real city center is at Waddles in Maine and Waddles in Livinoyes. There's the other city center building that you all should have bought at a bargain price, and that'd be the new city hall, and I suggested that way a long time ago. That was only forty thousand dollars, forty million dollars. Think of this whole project in relation to what you could have done with that, and that was a suggestion that I think you should have moved on. But right now, this is a green space, this is a public space, if this is a step to remove it back and undo all the Johnny-come-lately efforts. I remember when this was always going to be the Civic Center, and then this is just misguided, self-serving effort to either make a name for yourself or money or whatever it takes, but it's wrong. The whole thing's wrong. It started off with that building on the corner of Civic Center Drive, it should have been a beautiful building, it should have been a masonry building that looked like it's always been here. It's the kind of building in California that they're dozing over with those chicken coop roofs. So now, the downtown development wants to double down on that mistake and say, let's make this whole thing residential. The whole city is residential, it was put on a yellow piece of paper. Yellow is residential. This little piece of area of downtown, right on the, it's supposed to be a destination. It could be, by being a scientific city of tomorrow today and have some kind of a destination goal. Who wants to come and see eight hundred houses? That's not the definition of-
Thank you, Mr. Maros. Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up this evening. Counselor or city administration wish to respond at this point. I know P, was it, P2C was brought up at this point. This might be a good opportunity to talk about that. For those of you that have looked in the agenda packet and want to look at P2C, it is a letter from the city manager, Brian Kishnik, along with city attorney Lori Grid Bloom, to council. It's a well-put-together document. I know, Mr. Green, you spoke very well about this issue, and before we get to that, I know, Ms. Polacella, I believe we will have a study session within not-too-distant future to discuss further the medical marijuana issue, so I think that will be coming in the study session. I have talked to certain members of council regarding the memorandum from the city manager and the city attorney, and I think it's a very important document that everyone in the city should read and pay attention to, especially those that have signed the petition or are thinking of signing the petition, because if you read the memorandum, that petition can have severe ramifications on this city going forward. I think it is so important that I think it needs to be read into the record, and I'm going to do that this evening. And if my voice stops, I know there are other council members here that feel the same way, and they'll take over. According to the news media, there is an effort to initiate an amendment to the City of Troy Charter. In order for a proposal to be placed on the November 2017 ballot, there must be at least 2,920 valid signatures turned in on or before August 1st, 2017. The news media reports, the circulated petition language is as follows. "The city shall not enter into an agreement for the transfer, sale, lease, or use for more than ninety days of any parcel of public land, the whole of which is greater than two acres, except by the affirmative votes of the majority of city electors voting on a question at a general election. In light of the election law constraints, we can only provide factual information and cannot use public resources to either oppose or support a ballot question. However, we have fielded numerous questions about this charter amendment proposed that may also have been raised with city council members, and so the following information may be instructive. There has been some discussion about Section 12.3 of the Troy Charter. This was added as a charter amendment in 2005, and it allows for a right of referendum for public property that is rented, leased, or used for more than three years. Under Section 12.3, any agreement or contract for the renting, or leasing, or long-term use of public property to any person for a period longer than three years shall be subject to the same referendum procedure as is provided in the case of ordinances passed by the council. But any petition for such referendum must be filed within thirty days after publication of the proceedings of the meeting of the council at which such agreement or contract is authorized. There is a state law provision that requires a vote of the people before the sale of any park which is expressly designated as a park on a city master plan." Excuse me. "Although the Civic Center campus is designated on the master plan as community facilities, this state law provision accomplishes the same thing as the proposed charter amendment, should there be any contemplated sales of parkland in the future." Now, page two may be the most important part of this memorandum. "The general election generally refers only to a November election in odd or even years. The November ballots usually have other election items, so the addition of a potential land-use question on the November ballot would result in an increased length of the ballot, but minimal additional costs. However, the city already has several contracts for the use or lease of over two acres of property, and these contracts expire at different times throughout-" property, and these contracts expire at different times throughout the year. If this proposed charter amendment were to pass, any renewal would need to be negotiated and placed on the ballot either months before the expiration or months afterwards. There is a limit to the verbiage allowed for ballot questions, which may cause some difficulty in communicating the intricacies of complicated and lengthy amendments and agreements, or the reason why the agreement is recommended as serving the best interest of the City of Troy. In the past, the city has entered into several agreements that would likely require submission to the voters for any necessary renewals if this proposed charter language were to be approved. Here are some examples. The city has a ten-year agreement with the Troy Historical Society for use and management of the Troy Historical Village. The city has a ten-year agreement with the Troy Nature Society for the use and management of the Stage Nature Center. The city has an agreement with the Troy Racquetball Club for the use and management of the tennis courts on the Civic Center site. The city has an agreement with Camp Tygondroga leasing the restaurant building and parking facilities. The city has an agreement with the Billy Casper Golf and Use, for the use and management of the Sylvan Glen Golf Course. The city has an agreement with Billy Casper for use and management of Sanctuary Lake Golf Course. The city has an agreement with the Troy Beaumont Hospital, allowing Beaumont employees to park in the south part of Flynn Park Parking Lot. The city allows for Troy baseball boosters and Troy Cowboys and others to use the sports fields in city parks. The city has historically allowed road construction contractors to use city property exceeding two acres to be utilized as a staging area for construction of projects. As a measure to provide some relief to the residents in an area, the city entered into an agreement with the Saint Joseph Caldean Catholic Church, allowing the use of a parcel of city property to, to the south for necessary parking. The city has an agreement leasing the fifty-two dash four District Court to Oakland County. The building housing the courthouse is city-owned. The point here is that all of those leases would have to be renegotiated and have to go to a vote of the people if this proposal were passed. All I ask the residents of Troy to do is, before you sign a petition, no matter what that petition is, please do your homework. Please look at all sides, and not just the side of the person telling you to sign a petition. I've heard horror stories from residents about what's being said, about what's gonna happen to the Civic Center site, and if you don't sign the petition, this is gonna happen. There has been no decision made as to what's gonna happen to the Civic Center site, it's a long road. So all I ask you to do as a Troy resident is, before you sign anything, take a look at all sides of an issue. Any other comment from council? Councilwoman Abraham.
Thank you, Mayor, for reading that into the record. I think it's important that every resident understand what the impact of this language could be if this were to be adopted. I have no doubt that the people circulating the petition love the city, love the Civic Center, love the historic village, the nature society, the golf courses, all the amenities we have come to know and love and expect to be there. Mr. Green, in his comments, said this could cripple the city, and that is exactly what this amendment would do if this were to be adopted into the charter. This proposed language throws the baby out with the bathwater. I understand not everyone is inclined to support the development of this space. I know not everyone is inclined to give up green space, but please understand that signing this petition and potentially getting this passed in November could actually be a bigger detriment to the green space and the amenities that we've enjoyed for decades, even preceding the, the city becoming a city. We've gone through this before, we went through this when the charter was amended in two thousand and eight. It put a cap on the millage rate. Shortly thereafter, when there was an economic downturn, and there was a need to discuss the increase in the millage, it led to neighbors turning against neighbor, misinformation going out there. I don't want that to happen again. Frankly, I thought we had gotten past that. It's disappointing that the same type of scare tactics are being used again. The impact of this proposed charter amendment is beyond what anyone, I think, truly understood, perhaps not even those that drafted the language. I ask, I beg, all residents, going forward, let's use civility in the discussion, let's use facts. I can't tell you how many people have said to me, "I've stopped going to the library because I'm getting harassed walking in through the door to get a, to sign the petition." Please, we're all better than that, we, we've lived this before, we're better than this, let's do better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Henderson.
Sure, not one person on this council has voted to put a shovel in the ground on this project. We, we are all in investigative mode, and the, the language that's in this charter amendment really hamstrings the city on a lot of levels. You know, just, let's just pretend that Camp Ty's contract comes up, and it has to go on a ballot, and for whatever reason, low voter turnout, or people don't read properly or understand what's going on there, vote no, they don't want Camp Ty to, to be in that facility. So now we have to kick Camp Ty out, we have a blockballed building, and it has to wait till the next election before we can approve anybody's contract. So, I mean, that, that's worst-case scenario, no question, but that is not beyond the scope of possibility with the language in this proposed charter amendment. And you have to trust the people that you vote into office to make appropriate decisions. You don't want ten or eleven of these things every year to end up on a ballot that you have to vote for. We're charged with trying to make the best city that, that we can, not one of us up here wants to destroy the city of Troy, destroy parklands, and not do the best for our, our future residents of Troy. So if, if you don't like the decisions we make, then, you know, this year, November, make that decision at, at the council level, or in, or in two thousand nineteen, when I'm up for reelection, throw us out, you know, I, I get that, but don't hamstring future councils with, with this type of charter amendment.
Thank you. Any other comments, council? Mayor Protem Horrick.
I think you can hear us all speaking strongly, it's not that we're speaking for the Civic Center project, we're speaking for our charter and protecting it. We have to be careful about capricious changes to the charter and what it can do to us as a community in terms of our ability to manage ourselves. I do believe that this petition drive was very well-intentioned. I love that people are paying attention and being involved and giving input and, and sharing what they want to see or not see at the Civic Center property. We're not suggesting we don't want to hear from our citizens, it's the best part of this job, is getting out and meeting people and hearing what they believe on all sides of our decisions, I enjoy that, I value that. So, understand what collectively, I think we can speak, I'm speaking for everyone here, we want to hear from you, and we have not made a decision on the Civic Center, but the moment we make this charter amendment change, we render this city inefficient. We render the government here what many people criticize government for, not being able to make decisions, not being able to be effective. If you're a business that's doing contracts with us on any of these entities, and you have to wait to see if, by a referendum of the people, you can do business with us, would you do business with us if you were that businessperson? These ramifications are real. So, I just want folks that are working on that petition and a proposed charter amendment to go in eyes wide open and understand what you're doing, not to us, it's, it's another council down the road that's gonna, it's a legacy you will leave as you try to protect the legacy of the Civic Center. This is another legacy that is a very dangerous one to our community, and I don't think we can overstate it. We're speaking forcefully because we have a responsibility to share with our fellow residents our concern, we don't gain anything by this. We're not in this for ourselves or to make a name out of protecting our charter. So, help, we're listening to you, please listen to what we're saying and try to understand where we're coming from, we're not against you, we're with you, and we want to work with you. This really, really has the potential to cause a lot of harm, and it's, it's a real, real concern, it's right in front of us.
Thank you. Any other comment? Just one final from me. If we get to a point that we ever look to do anything with the city Civic Center, and somebody wants to see whether it should be voted on by the public, yes or no, up or down, once we know everything there is to know about it, come to me, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, okay? But this isn't the way you do it, okay? Next on the agenda are council referrals, items advanced to the city manager. We have one resolution advanced by Councilman Baker to direct the Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, to remove the Civic Center property from the DDA boundaries, so I will call on Councilman Baker.
Thanks, Mayor, I'm, I guess I'll start by reading the proposed resolutions, see if they're supportive and continue, continue the discussion. So, whereas the City of Troy is currently exploring the possibility of a town center development project for the Civic Center property, wherein the initial projections and assumptions include tax revenue from the town center development being generated for the City of Troy General Fund, and whereas the Civic Center property is currently within the boundaries of the City of Troy's Downtown Development Authority, DDA, and whereas the city, Troy City Council has the authority to direct the DDA to do a boundary amendment to remove the Civic Center property from the DDA boundaries, therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby directs the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, to do a boundary amendment to remove the Civic Center property from within the DDA boundaries.
Is there support? Support? Moved by Councilman Baker, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve N1, which is a resolution from Councilman Baker to direct the Downtown Development Authority, which is the DDA, to remove the Civic Center property from the DDA boundaries, as read into the record. Discussion, Councilman Baker.
Obviously, we've been speaking a lot about the Civic Center property, it's been on all of our minds, in our email inboxes, phone calls, a lot of your minds, as well as you enjoy our public resources and get talked to as you enter the library, the community center, the aquatic center especially, I hear, is pretty popular. So I did something, and I've spoken with several of you about this, and one of the concerns that I heard repeatedly, and it's, it's used, as I understand, as part of the discussion for petition gathering, is that if any tax, any taxes generated from this project wouldn't actually go to the City General Fund, they would go to the DDA, because currently all of this property is within the DDA boundaries. And so, as a result, some of the statements about the city putting out infrastructure costs and the tens of millions of dollars and receiving nothing back in the General Fund may not be as inaccurate as I had previously stated it was based on the current status of this land. So I did some talking with city management and staff and some research, and discovered that in order to make that not a factual statement, and to be in line with what I, my understanding of what council had talked about in the past whenever discussing this project, was to have the DDA remove the Civic Center property from its boundaries, so that any talk about the Civic Center development moving forward would, this, it would already be in the process of having the, the taxes go toward the City General Fund to cover the infrastructure costs and such, and wouldn't be tied up all the DDA. This property ironically was historically not in the DDA boundaries, about ten years ago it was put in, as I understand, by a council, I don't believe any of us were on here, but, in fact, I know we weren't, but it was put into the DDA boundaries at that time because they, that council was considering selling off this city hall, this land right here that fronts on Big Beaver, and they thought that would sweeten the deal perhaps, or something along those lines. But as we stand, the DDA is generating no income from the Civic Center property because we are not a income-producing, a revenue-producing piece of land, and there'd be no harm to the DDA to remove it. I, I had a brief memo in the agenda packet, and I've covered a lot of it, this process is not a quick, it's not a decision we make tonight, and it, it comes off the DDA boundaries, it would then, our direct, our direction would then go to the DDA, and they'd have to start, they'd have a public hearing to remove it, and then we would have a public hearing after that to approve it. But in my opinion, it seems to me like the most responsible thing to do with this property, if we are making assertions that there will be a net positive tax revenue for the city, we should at least be speaking from the position of having this property not within the DDA boundaries. And I was reminded tonight with Mr. Michelson, he's not here anymore, but he said, you know, you're gonna spend sixty million dollars and not get anything from it, basically said, and you only get eleven million back, I mean, that wasn't exactly correct, it's actually a net positive of twelve, eleven to twelve million dollars above the sixty million that's spent, but just that, the fact that he mentioned that alone made me realize that this is important, because this is a key point to the financial aspect of the Civic Center potential development project, so, based on that, that's why I brought this council referral tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, just to reiterate one point that Councilman Baker brought up, is in the initial stages of discussion about the Civic Center property, it was always understood that we would have to do something to rectify this situation anyway. So whether that happens a year from now, five years from now, when, when we get ready for a shovel-ready project, if we go that route, you know, this needs to be done, and I think it's important for the people to understand that that is within the responsibility and authority of the city council to be able to do this kind of thing. So again, whether we do it tonight, whether we do it a year, or two, or five from now, is, it is still something that has to take place and can take place. We, we have the authority and the responsibility to do that, to make sure that the revenues that we can generate off this project will actually materialize. And one other thing I didn't hear you mention, when, this, this Civic Center property was at one point park property, correct?
City manager, city attorney?
And it was, it was voted on by a previous council, none of us were involved in that, to remove it from the, from the park plan, so that it could be ready for sale. So, this is, the, these ideas that we're presenting or investigating right now are not new ideas, these are ideas that, that previous councils have considered. We're just trying to get, we're trying to just move it one inch forward to, to see what can possibly be done here, so I appreciate you bringing this forward tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
I forgot to say, you know, this is by no means has anything to do with any animosity towards the DDA, I think they've done a great job in this city, I spoke with Chairman Alan Kereluk last week about this and told them that I'd be bringing this forward, and I just wanted to make it clear that this is not, that I think there's anything wrong with the DDA, it's about what's best for the city as we move forward with these discussions and explorations, so I wanted to make sure that is clear. So I wanted to make sure that is clear.
Mayor Protem Hodorick?
First of all, thank you, Councilman Baker, for bringing this thinking forward so we could wrestle it. If we pass this resolution, we're directing the DDA to do the boundary amendment. I guess my question is, I like to think that in the process of that, if we surface something that we're not seeing right now that makes our direction right now not make sense for some reason that I can't conceive of right now, is there room in the process for that to get vetted and sorted out so that we make the best decision for the city?
Is that a city attorney question?
It sounds like maybe.
Yes. You're, the, the resolution as proposed directs them to prepare the language. However, it's city council that would ultimately make the decision as to whether or not it should be excluded. There may be issues that come up. For example, I know Mr. McLeish brought up that the DDA financed the community center. That may present some complications that certainly would need to be explored and should be explored before there is any vote on that matter.
So the answer is the process would allow us to sort through that?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a, a public hearing process that also requires notification to all of the taxing jurisdictions. If there's a change to the boundary, it also requires notification to all of the entities that are located within the district. There's a 60-day period of time within which there can, you can't implement anything at least, for at least 60 days afterwards. And then, of course, there are some advanced times before your public hearings as well, so at least 20 days in advance of all of the public hearings where you have to publish notices in newspapers and, and get the word out.
Any other comments before I go back to Councilman Henderson? Councilman Henderson?
Attorney Bloom, if in the future the Civic Center project does materialize and there has a couple of large parcels, maybe a hotel, something else, can that DDA District B redefined and add those parcels back into the DDA?
It's very difficult to add them back in, and again, you're subjecting, all of the, all of the taxing jurisdictions would have an opportunity to comment anytime you change the boundaries of the DDA. So you do need to be aware of that.
But it could happen.
It, it would have to go through the same process. Anytime you're amending a boundary, it would have to go through the exact same process, yes.
Councilman Baker, did you have something?
I just wanted to clarify, so the, back to Mayor Protem Hodorick's question, approving this tonight doesn't end the conversation, obviously. We, it still comes back to us at a later date for final approval, and should something be discovered that would say, hey, you know, this is not the best idea for the city, we have ample opportunity to, to make that change, correct?
Yes, the, the resolution as proposed directs the DDA to do a boundary amendment to remove the Civic Center property from within the DDA boundaries. However, that can certainly be rejected by this council who is the final authority on that.
After they do that?
Correct.
Right. So if I can, I mean, to me, and I guess I'm talking to you fellow council members, if the, I think this needs to be explored and looked at and this starts the ball rolling on this process, especially in light of all that's going on with the petition gathering and the, the statements that are being made out there, I think it shows good government that we're paying attention to that and looking at protecting the city's interests, especially as it comes to infrastructure costs and fire and police and all the other concerns that are brought forward about the potential redevelopment. And again, if something comes of this where we are advised not to do it, we have the opportunity to say, okay, we explored it, we started the process, but we realized it's not best. So then we could then change our minds, I guess is a colloquial way of putting it. So I'm voting in favor.
Mayor Protem Hodorick?
Put that way, and if that's the case, asking our DDA to explore this with us, we have an outstanding DDA. We have very wise, community-minded team on our DDA that can weigh in with us and help us sort this through. And to echo you, I mean, this is not being disrespectful of our DDA or, it's actually in respect of it, in my mind, to explore this with them and to, and to provoke this process to go forward. And I would value their insights that will come to us through the process. I think it could be very valuable to all of us, the citizens overall, as we watch that conversation. I appreciate that you thought to do this.
Any other discussion by council? Several comments. I don't share the same reasoning to, to do this, to get the ball rolling. I don't, I'm not saying I don't agree to do this, but, but I don't think we should let this petition direct us to do something. And that's, that, that concerns me, that that's why we're doing this, because we should be doing it for a different reason. We shouldn't be doing it because of the petition. I mean, it makes sense to me for, for a variety of reasons. One of those reasons being that right now the, there's no capture. And even if we changed, even if there was a capture and they took the capture from a new Civic Center with new revenue, we've put such a restriction on the DDA that they, they cannot use the funds that come into the DDA for anything other than paying off the bonds, maintenance, and administrative fees, and after tonight, they can do some small marketing. So if we gave, if there was a pile of money coming to the, to the DDA tonight after a big Civic Center or maybe two years from now, they couldn't use it the way it is. We'd have to change the way the DDA operates in order for that. So, you know, there, there's just a lot of, I have no idea why the city council in 2008, changed it from being part to, to being part of the DDA. If they hadn't done that, we wouldn't even be sitting here talking about this tonight. And that's another issue that I, I generally don't like to change decisions that have been made by past councils unless there's a real good reason to do it. I think they had a real good reason to do it, but I think that reason has passed us by. I, I think that, that time passed us by. So it makes sense to me. I just don't want to do it because of this petition. I want to do it for the right reason. And if we're just doing this to start a conversation, it might make more sense to me, why don't we have a study session with the DDA and talk about why we want to do it and what they think about doing it before we, before we tell them what to do? So I don't see the emergency to do this. Quite honestly, we don't even know if there's going to be a, a development on the Civic Center site, so why, why do we need to do that tonight? It makes maybe more sense to me that we should have a study session with the DDA to talk about it. If that's what we're trying to do here, is start a conversation, then why don't we have a conversation with them about doing it? And I'd feel maybe a little bit better hearing from the business along the DDA as to what they, what they want to do. So I, I just bring that up. I just don't, I don't want to do this because of the petition. Councilman Henderson?
The, so the commentary on the, on the street at the library and, and on Facebook is, has led itself towards this is not going to net any money to the City General Fund. And that, that is just a, according to what I've absorbed in my mind in all the discussions, not an accurate statement. So I, I think that if, if we're going to at least pursue this any further, we need to get definition whether this council and whether the DDA has the chops to make that change and to make this a cash flow, a positive cash flow situation for the city. If it doesn't positively cash flow, I'm tapping out on a Civic Center project. It, it just doesn't make any sense. So I, you know, I like, I like the idea, regardless of, you know, what the petition says and, and what the charter amendment changes are, I think it's an important step to be able to define that, make sure that we're all on the same page, we all think the same, and, and it is going to be a positive cash flow for the city. If it's not, I'm out.
I'm not saying that I don't think, I, it's a good idea. I just don't know at the time why we need to do that tonight. And if we're doing it because of the petition, then that's the wrong reason to do it. Councilman Baker?
I, I respect your opinion, Mayor, on that. I hear what you're saying. And maybe I misspoke. I don't see it as a direct reaction to the petition as much as a reaction to what I'm hearing from citizens out in the public and who are talking to me about it, and I know many of us. So I, you know, certainly doing something reactive to a petition drive is not a wise thing, but when enough people in the city are talking about it or posting about it, I think that that's something that we do need to look at. And I'm very supportive of study sessions, as you know, but I, I think the timing to try to schedule a study session then pushes us out even further, and we're, we're not doing what's best for the city. And I think that my proposal as stated is what's best for the city. And, you know, if we learn in the process that it's not, we have ample opportunity to change it, as we talked about. But I, I hear you and support you in that opinion. It's just, I don't fully agree with your sentiments on it. I'm not sure that trying to schedule a study session helps at this point when part of this process is a back and forth with the bodies and creates that, and at least we are hearing the concerns of our citizens and acting on that, their behalf.
Any other comment? Yeah, just some response to that. What's really going to sway me on this whole thing is the PDQ. When we get that back, and until that comes back, I don't know how anybody could ever make a decision on what to do with the Civic Center site. In my understanding, that's coming back in October. Is that correct?
That's correct. RFQ.
Yeah.
Request for qualifications.
RFQ. Correct.
PDQ if it was quicker than that.
So I, I don't know, you know, I just don't see the emergency, but that's just, that's just me. I support the concept. I, I'm not saying I don't support the concept. Any further discussion? Mayor Protem Hodorick?
You, you sit on the DDA, correct? When the DDA meets, is that recorded?
No.
But council members could attend, any member of the public could attend in the background?
It's an open meeting.
As I hear you about the study session, but I actually really want the DDA to study it as an entity on its own without the noise of us in the midst of it, is my thinking. And so I agree with you, and yet I, I also agree with you, and I think this might be the most efficient way to get the, to get this discussed.
Councilwoman Abraham?
I think I'm hearing a level of support in general for this concept of removing the Civic Center property from the DDA. And maybe we're all coming to that support for different reasons. The way that I see it is I don't see any downside to voting on this or supporting this tonight and then having the study session. The conversation's going to happen, whether it's before the vote or after the vote. Let's, let's just get on it now. I, I, I feel we need to just move forward on this. I think it's something that we should have done before, and we know it's a good idea or a good thing to study, so let's just, let's just do it now and have those study sessions as well.
Councilwoman Pennington?
So Mayor, I'm just curious, why would you think the, this hamstring's the DDA? If we, if we pass this resolution now, I'm just curious what your, what your thoughts are on that?
Well, if the purpose is to start a discussion, you know, then I think we should have the discussion. To me, that this isn't starting the discussion, this is telling them what to do. And then they'll decide whether they should, should do it or not. It might be a matter of semantics, but, you know, we're telling the DDA what to do rather than sitting down having a discussion with them about the Civic Center property. I don't anticipate a pushback from them, but I just, there, there are business people along the corridor, and I always feel that it's important to hear their voices. I do sit on the board, and I will be, you know, I am supposed to be the representative from city council that sits on the board, so I'll be there anyways. But I, I just think it's always good to, you know, this is an important, this is an important subject, and, you know, when I see language that directs the DDA to do something, I, I think we should just sit down and discuss it. We have time to do that. There's no, there's no emergency here. That's all.
Well, I understand your concerns, but I, like Councilman Baker stated, I, they will also understand that we, you know, have to, we have so many people talking about this subject that we need to address it as quickly as possible.
Any other discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
No.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hodorick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda are council comments. Any comments from council this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I just wanted to address one thing. The, our Congressman Dave Trot just supplied us all with a, a note here, and I'll just read the note. "As, as your United States Congressman, I have the honor of nominating young people to attend our military service academies. I've enclosed in this envelope the most recent Military Service Academy nomination application packet. If you're aware of a young man or woman with a strong desire to serve their country, please forward this package to them. Additional copies of this package are available at his website," and it's too long for me to read, but he also gave us his phone number. So that phone number is 248-528-0711.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Next on the agenda are reports. We've discussed one report. Any other discussion on the reports this evening?
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Hodorick?
I see the report P2A, the City of Troy Stormwater Detention and Retention Basins. Appreciate this report and the terrific broad overview it gives of these various areas throughout the city. Our last council meeting brought this discussion up. It's occurred to me here as we're sitting here is this, we were talking about the vulnerability of rain trees. Do you look at this report as the conclusion of, of that discussion, or is this a piece of information while you continue, continue to explore?
It's kind of, it's, that's a really fine line question. I, I do consider it a resolution to the rain tree discussion. I don't consider that moving forward after talking anymore, after talking to the Rain Tree Association President and Vice President or Treasurer. But this is an ongoing study that we want to do, and this is just where we were with the information today. And I know Councilwoman Abraham had some questions as well, that it just, it's a, it's a project that keeps on going, council or Mayor Protem.
So this is something we'll continue to evaluate. I worry about the vulnerability is, is the bottom line and, and the safety, well, everything that you're addressing here, it's there. So it's our, it's a response to us, but it's ongoing and you're constantly looking at it.
That's true.
Okay.
And to your point, the more we uncover, the more, no pun intended, right, the more we uncover and the more we learn. So we will continue to go through that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments about the reports? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from Troy, from members of the public outside of
from Troy, from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening, so thank you for coming tonight. We're adjourned.